I will call a meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Congressman Waller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Delakson?
Mayor Gates?
Yes.
Citizen comments? I see no one here. I would like to make a motion to add an item D under consent agenda that was emailed this afternoon, application to conduct excluded bingo from the women of today.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Public hearing, we have a public hearing tonight, it's second reading in public hearing of ordinance number 116, regarding the election wards of Morris City Code.
So, do we do the motion before they have the hearing or after?
After.
After, so. Yeah, and you know, the purpose of the second reading in the public hearing is to give notice to the public that we're going to be doing, doing an ordinance, and we did that, we published notice of it. I did not receive any comments, complaints, concerns about what we're proposing to do. And actually, if you looked at the newspaper today, you saw that the county has already, I think, taken action or looked at, you know, what the county commissioner districts are going to look like based upon what it is that we're doing here with this change to the precincts. So, you know, you know, we're just consolidating two precincts into one because we had six precincts and three polling places, and now we're going to have three precincts and three polling places. And actually, if you looked in the newspaper, I think one of the county commissioner districts is actually one of our precincts. So, that's, the whole commissioner district is that precinct, I believe it's, was it number two?
Should be number two.
Number two, and then the other thing that I, when I read the article, it's like, well, this isn't right. They can't split a precinct because one of the county commissioner districts had part of one precinct and part of another precinct. Technically, that's not correct because they have one city precinct and there's township land that falls within the city limits, so it's not technically in our precinct. But it is in the city limits, and that's where Timmy Michelson lives. There's a little square of, of, you can, I don't want to pull. You don't have to pull out the map, but there's this little square of township land inside the city limits, and so that's what it was. So, basically, what they did, you know, they, they, they had to take what we have, and based on our numbers, they're pretty close to what county commissioner districts were anyway. So, you know, my recommendation is that we just move forward with this. I have not heard, actually, I was on a Zoom meeting with Jeff Acker this morning because it's easiest way to get in touch with your legislators now. And one of the questions, I asked him if he knew at all what the Senate and House districts are going to look like, and he did not. He said he's seen maps, he hasn't been asked to be, for his opinion on what they're going to do, but he thinks Stevens and Traverse County are probably be still together as far as representative district in Minnesota. But, but nobody knows what those maps are going to look like for the House and Senate, but they have to have them out by the 15th of February.
It's coming up.
So, the, I think the court's gonna do it because the legislature couldn't do it because they're a split legislature. But next week, we'll get the, the House district and Senate district maps, and I don't think it'll affect what we're doing here because Stevens County will be in one or the other, whatever it is. They're not going to be split, Morris is not going to be split, so.
Yeah, we just went from three county commissioners, or from four to three. We used to have four county commissioners rolled into this and down to three now, so.
So, now, now there'll be.
Seems a little cleaner.
Well, it's, you know, the, the population base, there's more population in the city than there is out in the rural areas. And, you know, the, the biggest thing, it's not a money thing, you know, what we did. We actually consolidated polling places to begin with. We know and understand that there's going to be a tremendous number of people are going to vote early. So, even the polling places are not going to see as much activity as they would if everybody voted on Election Day like used to happen a long time ago. The other thing is that we, we go from six ballots in the city of Morris to three. You know, and that's going to make it much easier on everybody that's dealing with that. And it's actually going to make it much easier to prevent any kind of mishap where somebody got the wrong ballot. You know, because, you know, Sandy and I wind up working on the, Stacy does election judge work, and Sandy and I work on the absentee ballot stuff for the city. And it's a lot of work keeping all that stuff separated and straight when you're doing your counting and all that kind of stuff. But the other thing I would tell you is that there is probably no, no stomach whatsoever on the Republican side to go to mailed in ballots for the city. And so, we'll be, be stuck doing, you know, polling places for the near future. But you can do, you can mail, do ballots ahead of time. And we're going to see a lot more of that, I think, people making sure that they get their ballots in before Election Day. So, I would recommend that you, you know, there's no further information for the public hearing, that you'd close it and then move to have the ordinance approved, and then we'll publish it.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, and seeing no one to speak to the public hearing, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for action.
You just need a motion on that, Mayor?
Yep.
I'll make that motion approving the second reading of ordinance number 116, replacing section 2.76, election wards of the Morris City Code, chapter two.
I'll second. Any discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Congressman Salvi?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Delakson?
Miller?
Mayor Gates?
Yes. Reading and approval of minutes from January 25th.
I'll move approval of the regular main minutes from January 25th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have the condensed version of the same minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the January transit report, the gambling reports, and the application to conduct excluded bingo that was added. And I will move approval of those items.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on any of them? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. We have petitions, requests, and communications, consumption and display permit for Crystal Lanes. This is just a renewal thing as usual, right, Blaine?
Ah, yes, I believe so.
We just need a motion on that.
I'll make that motion approving the consumption and display permit for Crystal Lanes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have a board appointment. Morris area community advisory council will have a new member, and I make a motion to appoint Monica Sid to the advisory council.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Ordinances and resolutions. We have resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the airport taxi lane reconstruction and taxiway crack seal project.
Yeah, this one is, is, it's actually a 2023 project that you haven't seen a lot about it. And, and this actually does have a local share that we're going to have to cover. But, but I do have some thoughts on that, too. But what happened was because of the fact that we, we met with MinDOT Aviation and the FAA and, and our engineers, and because of the fact that we're finishing up this airport runway extension, and we did have on, on our capital improvement project listing for 2023, doing this taxi lane reconstruction and, and crack sealing project. The airport's going to be shut down this summer for probably three months, you know, while they do all the work on the runway and stuff. And so, the FAA suggested that maybe this is a project that could be done at the same time because it does involve working on the taxiway that goes to pretty much the length of the runway. And then, you know, where airplanes are moving around and stuff to hangars, and so it just makes sense to do that. It does require a local share because there's less federal money. If you look in the memo that I, that I put, put together, it's about $525,000. About 44% of that is federal, about 39% of it's state, and then the rest is local. So, it's $93,000 local. But it is a requirement that we have at the airport that we have to maintain all this stuff. So, it is a project that we're going to have to figure out how to fund at some time. The one thing I would tell you is that this year, and, and actually, poor Whitney, we're, we're, we're trying to keep straight all the different pools of money that are, that are popping up, and I've mentioned this before. So, this year, we did get extra maintenance money, a couple different pots of maintenance money. So, we have about $31,000 that, that is extra money that would go towards operation and maintenance at the airport that we already budgeted for within our current budget. So, we can slide some of that over there. We also, at the, the meeting I had with MinDOT Aviation, the FAA, we learned that there's a chunk of money that's going to be coming through from the federal stimulus package. We don't have the exact amount. They estimate it's going to be over half a million dollars. But it comes in the form of what they call airport improvement project funding, AIP. And that's, a lot of times, that's where the federal share of projects comes from. But we also know that if we're getting a big chunk of money, that's additional AIP money, then the state's going to be getting more money, that's additional AIP money because that's kind of the way they divvy everything up. So, so in the long run, it could be that, before this is all said and done, that we're going to see some extra money that's going to come through that way. Or it's going to be extra money that's going to come through that's going to pay for something that we normally would have to pay for. And just as kind of a routine general comment, we are seeing that happen in a number of different areas. Transit's one of them, where this year, operations are fully funded, you know, for transit. And the fare money that we take in from transit, we can actually set aside and use for, for some other things for transit. You can't move it to other things. But it's going to be interesting to see what happens in the next couple of months because they're starting to finally figure out how all this stuff's going to shake out. So, my recommendation is that, you know, we, we, we go ahead and we do this, we bid it out. Before we make a final decision on it, we'll take a look at the bids, see what happens with it. And, and the one thing I would, I don't know how much you've heard about what's happening with Riley Brothers. You know, I haven't seen anything specifically, but we know and understand that potentially, there's going to be a change in what happens with the operations at Riley Brothers. And so, this might be the first bid where we'll actually see some kind of a change in what's happening with that company. And, and, you know, we don't know anything officially, but, but, you know, we're starting to see information filter in that something's going to happen with Riley Brothers, you know, and, and their operations out there. They're still going to be there, it's just going to be in a different, different format. And, and we fully expect they're going to be bidding on this project. And we fully expect they're going to be bidding on the, the street project that we have coming up that we'll probably be advertising for, coming to you to get authorization in, in March to be able to bid it out. So, my recommendation is we go ahead and we do this. We've already identified a little bit of money that can help pay for that local share, and then, and then we'll go from there and see what happens. But, but you think about it, in the end, this airport's going to be almost brand new from a pavement standpoint, and we haven't put hardly a penny into it yet. You know, and so for the future, moving forward, it's, it's going to be in very good shape.
Right, I think it makes sense that we do this. I mean, we'll have actually close to $3 million into, into the airport, isn't it, that, all total? On these two projects or in these future projects?
Well, with the runway extension, you know, you're talking, what is it, 10 million?
That was 10 million.
Yeah, it's, it's.
And that's free to us, basically.
Yeah, it's free, it's free to us, and so we reap the benefits of it. And then that AIP money, I mean, that, that, that goes a long way. They still don't know what all you can use it for. The one, the one thing I would share with you is that we know the 100, the 100 low lead underground tank is at the end of its life, and it's going to have to be replaced. And to put above ground 10,000 gallon double walled airport, you know, type tank is probably $300,000, $400,000. They're, they're very expensive. Actually, Superior has one of their subsidiary companies, I think, makes them north of the Twin Cities. But, so we're trying to find funding for that. It would not come from the AIP funding, but it might come from additional money that the state of Minnesota gets. But they're very, it's not like just building a, for airports, the federal standards for how something is set up for fueling airplanes at our airport is very, very specific. And it's not a matter of just building a bracket and putting a 10,000 gallon tank on it, and then it goes through a pumping system that, that is, you know, part of, you know, the, the whole fueling process.
Is that something that, that, you know, we'll, we'll get basically all new, a brand new airport with all that new tar and stuff, and then we'll have to go in there and dig a big hole and take the tank out?
No.
No?
No, no, because, you know, what's going to happen is, is we'll be able to take the tank out, and the new one's just going to sit on top, it's going to be above.
But we'll do that in conjunction with this somehow, somewhere, we'll get this figured out.
Ah, yeah, it won't be part of this project. It'll be, it'll be probably next year of the year.
Yeah, well, I, I guess I don't want to dig that.
Nope.
Dig a hole in the new tar just to get that tank out.
No, this will be more outside of that area coming around where they come off the taxiway, and then they come into the hangar areas, in between the hangar areas. Yeah, so.
All right, so we have a resolution authorizing advertising for bids for the taxi lane reconstruction. I will move approval of that.
Have a second.
Any discussion?
Get her done.
Sounds good. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Congressman Miller?
Delakson?
Walters?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Gates?
Yes. We have resolution authorizing fund transfer.
And this is just a, it's, it's more of a housekeeping measure, but the city has a policy that we keep 35% in our general fund as a reserve in case we need it for cash flow and those things. And, and anything above that, we would move to the capital fund. I don't think we did it last year. We haven't done it for a little while, but this is, the excess money in the general fund that we don't need, that's above the 35%, and it just goes into the capital fund. When we do our audit, they throw them together anyway. You know, that was a change in the government accounting standards where, where they, we used to move money into the capital fund so they wouldn't be looking at our general fund reserves and seeing money sitting there, even though we need it, we potentially could need it for cash flow. But, but now they, they, they throw it all together at the same time. And so, so it'll just go into the capital reserve. You know, the, the only concern you'd have for cash flow, our major funding source is local government aid. In Minnesota, we don't have to worry about that right now because they have so much money coming into their budget. It's, it's just almost bizarre. You know, they're estimating they're going to have close to $8 billion excess money in their, their two-year budget. And they're trying to figure out what the, LGA is not going to, not going to be cut. And at, at the same time, it could be that we see an increase in LGA for this, this year and next year. That's what, what the organizations are pushing for. But this is more of a housekeeping measure, just to put it, put it in the right place.
Okay.
I will move on that resolution, allowing authorization of fund transfers.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Congressman Delakson?
Miller?
Salvi?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Mayor Gates?
Yes. City manager report.
I'll mention a couple of things here. Actually, I'm going to start with something that's not in the report, but we did receive a fully executed copy of the grant for the transit bus garage. Originally, when we submitted the request for the grant and we met with the people, they suggested, well, if you need a couple more bays, maybe you add them at this time. And then they wound up having two separate grant applications because it was two different years, and, and then they worked it all out and they threw it into one grant, and they approved it and signed it. And so, the next action that you're probably going to see out of us is we have to select a, an architect firm that'll do up the design and then get it ready for bidding out. So, it's about a million dollar project, and that one is funded 80% by the state and federal government and 20% locally. But again, who knows what's going to happen with, with excess money that's coming through as things go. But that, that was good news, that, that we just found out. Jim Dipbener's going to retire, he's going to be done the end of March. That was kind of a shocker to me, I wasn't expecting that. So, actually, in today's newspaper, we had an advertisement for that position. We'll probably keep that advertisement open through maybe the first week in March, and then go through applications and try to have somebody on board, you know, selected and, and, and ready to come in in April. We'll, we'll see what happens. This position is unique in that it's public works position, but he also holds licenses to be able to operate the, the water, water plant, sewer plant. We'll continue to advertise the position that way, even though now we have a utility supervisor that, Ryan, that, that's able to, has the licenses and is able to run the water plant and the sewer plant. But we'll, we'll see, see what's out there on the market. I don't know if there's any questions about that. But, um, we updated our website, and you may have seen that if you went in and looked at the city website. You know, we went back and, and, and actually, what we did was we, we, we updated, when it comes to snow alerts, the, you know, the ordinance requires that we notify the media. You know, and, and really, the, the media that is, that is in Stevens County and Morris is, is the radio station. Our ordinance talks about TV and, and radio, but obviously, we have a newspaper. And, and so when, when we call a snow alert, what I put in the website is that, you know, your best, most up-to-date information is listening to the radio station. You can also sign up for a code red alert, you know, and it's very easy to do. I think in the case of the last two people that came and talked to us, they both signed up for that now. And, and then the newspaper actually has online presence, you know, that you can go to the newspaper and, and they'll have the information on, on their, their online system. And then we'll try to update the social media platforms that we have as we can. But that's not the go-to place, you know, and, and going back and looking, you know, after what happened at the last meeting, we did not, we did not have anything updated on our, our website. It was actually a link they found through Google to the law enforcement announcement. They, they had the ability to make an announcement or put on a notice that got linked into our website. And so, it, it was in the back, one of the back pages of our website. But we do know how to update that, and, and I've actually updated a couple of things. And I'm going to put another update on there tomorrow about, you know, snow removal and what you should do with snow, snow and stuff like that. But I, I wanted to make sure you understood that and. The other thing I, I, I would tell you is that, you know, I've spent a lot of time in the last week looking at potential funding. There's, it's amazing how much funding is out there. And actually, I'm going to be meeting with Blue Horizon Solar on, on Monday to talk about the potential for just looking at a solar project for our water treatment plant because there's a, a big USDA grant out there right now that you could, we could apply for to put solar up for our water treatment plant, and the Morris model team's been looking at that. The potential for having a majority of that funded through a grant versus, you know, borrowing money to pay for it. And then the energy savings that we would see would pay for whatever the local share is. So, we'll look at that, you know, and, and part of that is, and then actually, when, when I was talking to the FAA and, and MinDOT Aviation, the question came up about putting up some solar at the airport. You know, and because this money that we're, we're going to be getting could be used for probably doing that. Now, I have no idea, we haven't really looked at the airport, you know, for putting up a smaller solar array at the airport that could help, you know, provide some energy for some basic functions out there. Heating isn't done by electrical heating, it's done by natural gas, I believe it is, out there, which we know is going to be expensive this year. But it, it's amazing how many different pots of money are starting to pop up with regards to that. And that's before the state legislature ever gets involved with that discussion because they're talking crazy numbers, you know, that they want to put into sustainable renewable energy and things like that. But we have a split legislature, and, you know, they may not agree on anything when it's all said and done. And if they don't, then there's plenty of money to pay for what the budget is right now. So, so we watch that really close all the time and, and try to figure out what we're going to do. And we just go from there.
We have a budget surplus, too, they're trying to figure out how to spend.
Right.
In addition to all the federal.
Right.
Is this a budget year for the?
Ah, it's a bonding year, I think.
Bonding year?
This year.
Is it figuring out giving the surplus back instead of spending?
But I, but I remember when they're debating whether or not they wanted to go over a billion dollars on a bonding package, and there was a proposal to do a billion dollars of sustainable projects. Billion dollars. You know, and they're talking about a billion dollars for paying frontline workers a bonus. You know, where last year, they approved 250 million, and now they're talking a billion dollars to do that. And they couldn't figure out how to spend the 250 million, so I'm not quite sure how they're going to figure out how to spend a billion, but.
Paying a bonus.
You know, so, I mean, the numbers are just crazy, you know, what they're looking at. But we'll, we'll see what happens, you know, and the big thing about it is we've always, we've always been kind of one step ahead. So, so we know and understand how all this stuff works. And, and, and actually, the university's doing a project out there on battery storage. And one of the discussions we had was the potential for doing battery storage along with solar. So, then you make energy during the day, and it's captured, excess is captured in the battery and you use it at night. And that system is coming through now, that you're starting to see more and more and more of that, that happening where the, the cost of those systems is coming down. And it's, it's amazing what they can do to kind of shave off your energy use. But we'll, we'll see what happens. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have, Blaine, I have a question. I was approached by a member of the park board, and I was wondering if you could make a clarification for me. I guess I, this individual asked. I guess I, uh this individual asked me about sidewalks on our parks and um I I was informed that they were given the go-ahead to do Green River Park, but not Wells Park and not East Side Park with regards to sidewalks. And I thought in our work session, we talked about Wells Park in particular because of, you know, handicap people can't get to the concession stand, so I just thought we had approved all of them, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'd have to go back and look. East Side Park, I don't know that there was anything.
East Side's done, right?
East Side's pretty much done. We talked about, you know, the potential for maybe getting into the playgrounds that. And uh I'd have to go back and look and just see what all we put in there, cuz I know that uh um we we did start looking and it could be one of those things where um you can only do so much and then we'll come back and, you know, cuz that that Wells Park one, it makes no sense that you can't get to the concession stand.
Exactly, right, yeah.
But I'll go back and take a look at that and just see what what's all in there.
All right.
And then the park board is meeting tomorrow and one of the things we're gonna talk about is whether or not we wanna tweak the camping fees cuz we have to, we have to order new envelopes that people put their money in and that's the time when, if you're gonna make the change, before you print up a bunch of envelopes that you're gonna have for two, three years, that's the time to do it, but we'll we'll take a look at that.
Okay. All right.
There's a couple of other issues that are gonna come up with the park board too.
Fair enough, thank you.
Yep.
Have the park board ever talked about, or is is it actually a a feasible to put in a a dumping station at the park and then have it pumped?
Um, I, well, anything's feasible. It's it's what it would cost.
Right.
But uh it, you know, you'd have to size it big enough for what you're gonna do and then uh find a place to put it. And then I I'm, I mean, I don't know that we've ever engineered that, but we could.
Pumping is expensive.
Right.
You know.
It's expensive?
I mean, if you're, if you're gonna maintain that and, you know, have, say, Ringo Britson's or whoever does that come out and pump out each time, I mean, it's not you're gonna have to add on considerably to your.
Yeah, I I I'm not, I'm not saying to have uh um hookups.
No, you're talking about like this underground tank or something, like go dump it into the tank and then you pull, then you pull out of that.
Oh, for RVs and things, you mean?
Yeah.
For RVs and stuff, yeah.
Cuz right now they're going to Jerry's.
Right.
Or they're going to Benson. They're go- or they're going to Starbucks. Uh they, they just, they just don't camp here because they have sewer.
Yeah, I think isn't, well, there was, I think last year, wasn't it, Blaine and I talked to you about, there was grants elsewhere to approve campground. Maybe we should keep our eyes open for that.
Yeah.
That might be something we could.
Cuz I would imagine Jerry's just goes into our normal sewer system.
Sure does. Oh, sure does.
Whereas uh, you know, uh out out there, you'd have to have it pumped out, cuz our regular bathrooms just have a septic system.
Right.
You know, with the field.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't know what.
But it would just be a big.
It'd be a nice asset out there.
I'm not an engineer, but I guess.
It'd be a big tank, but then you'd have to have somebody come and pump it on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Unless there's, unless there's some grants available or something, then.
I think we could just keep our eyes open. Maybe there's something out there. Who knows?
Well, and the sad part is that the sewer plant's like right around the corner.
Yeah.
That's probably the closest place to the sewer plant, cuz it's on the right side of the river too. You know, whereas most of our, all of our sewage comes across the river to get to the sewer plant.
We just have to pump it.
We just have to pu- you'd have to pump it there, you know, and and uh.
Well, I mean, it, but.
But everything's doable for a price.
Right, right. Well, it might be something.
You're, you're like, it's talking about a station where they go dump.
Yeah, they just have a, they just have a station there and.
Does Starbucks have individual hookups or just the place you dump?
I guess I'm not sure about Starbucks, but I know Benson does.
They have individuals?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I had some cousins, we had family reunions last year at the park and it's like, well, you brought your motor home. Are you staying here? No, no, we're staying at Benson because they have sewer.
We'll have to reach out to our state representatives, tell them we got a hole for some of that surplus.
Yeah.
Need a pumping station.
Well, in Elk Lake, you know, we we have individual.
Really?
Yeah.
You know, so it's just, you just, we're plumbed right in, so you don't have to dump anything.
Yeah, you're plum- you're.
Plum right into sewer and we have city, city water.
Yeah. They pay for that.
We pay for it, but it's part, it's part, part of your uh rent on your your spot.
Sure. Which which ours would be too, if they figured it out, but.
Yep.
Anyway, that's interesting. Okay, any, anything else uh on the city manager report? Anything else to come before the council? All right, meeting adjourned.